Coming and talking to us, or talking with us, at us, whichever you'd like to do. I'm trying to sit there, don't, we got the order, I guess, but we'll go to the recorder's office first. And share what you need to share, please help us on your budget. And just share how much money you're gonna save this next year. And appreciate, serious appreciate all of you taking that time to help us with this process. It's the funnest process of the year.
June 13?
No, is it, yes, it is, yes, it is.
It is, it's 13?
Yes.
I haven't had to write it yet today, so I wasn't sure.
Oh. Oh, I, oh, you think I can see that far? Okay. All right, I'm just gonna, probably the taming glasses on and off, because I can't see. But first, I just thought I would start, and I think, oh, thank you. I don't have a great size, I. I think most of you probably know what our office does, that we maintain and keep the land records. I just thought I'd wanted to share maybe a couple of goals that we have for 2025, just so you kind of know what we're doing in our office. We're doing the mapping project, which is where we're taking our old MyLars and digitizing them and converting them, so that they are all up to date and using the AutoCAD program. We currently have about almost 1,900 maps done. We have a long ways to go, but we're, we're getting them done and hoping that next year we can get.
Is this part of that 100,000 that we've given the office there a few years ago?
Yep, this is part of that same project.
Okay.
So, and we can talk about that whenever you want, I guess. But, and then the second goal that we have is we launch the Property Watch. I don't know if you're familiar with that. And we are hoping, we right now have about almost 900 people that have signed up. I would love every property owner to sign up for it. So we're hoping this year to maybe get the word out a little bit more and maybe talk to the title companies and see if they want to help with closings, to just put that information to the people that are purchasing property, that they can sign up for free. And so those are kind of the two main goals that I'm hoping this year to push through and work on.
Well, you, I should know, but can't remember, what is the Property Watch?
So it's just, so it's just a free program that we have out there that any property owner can register online and get notified anytime anything's recorded on their property. So if it changes ownership, or if they get a loan, or they pay off a loan, anytime anything's recorded, it'll notify, notify them. That way, if something's recorded that was in error that they didn't do, they can act on it quickly.
So does it pick up easements in that, right, so this contact me and he had gotten some flat maps, and then a couple of weeks later, he really got a flat map and there showed an old easement for a road?
Yeah, anything.
That wasn't there two weeks ago, but he was not happy?
Not happy, yeah, I don't know if he came in and talked to us, hopefully he did. But any, we abstract any document that's affecting, you know, that legal description on the document. So if they're signed up for Property Watch, it'll alert them if anything is affecting their property. So if they haven't signed up, they won't get notified, but if they have, they should be getting notified through that program. And so far, we've had people that have said that they love it, because, you know, they're not checking all the time to see if something's been recorded. And people are more worried now than ever with fraud and stuff. So, anyway, so hopefully we can get more people to sign up for that, that's our goal.
Does it cost the county any money?
I mean, it costs us for the time for IT, right? And for my employees to look through them as they get, come through and make sure that they're actually property owners. But that's the only thing, as of this point, you know, the time's already been done, built the system. IT, Mark helped us do that, so. And they did pass state code that we, every recorder has to have this program as of now.
Thanks, Carl, I didn't, wasn't quite clear what it was either, so thank you.
You're welcome. And then, so the 2025 expenditures, we are lower this year, obviously, because we are completing those two projects that we had all that money wrapped into for preserving those books that we had. We're hoping to finish that in the next couple of weeks, or couple months at the most with the one project. They're bringing all those books back to us, so we won't have that being, going into next year's budget. Our biggest expense is probably our software for AutoCAD, for my, for the six employees in the office, as well as the seasonal employees. Otherwise, everything else is pretty much the same as what it's been. We haven't altered that or increased it. Besides, the AutoCAD did go up 5% for 2025, based on just expense of everything else going up a little bit. Is there any questions with that?
Why are professional services dropping so dramatically?
Because we had that, those two projects wrapped up in that.
Oh, okay.
And so we're finishing those this, this year. Anything else on those? And then, the next one, I just had our, the team that we have, we have seven full-time employees in our office. Only six of those positions are full. I still have not filled the chief deputy position, just based on not needing that demand right now. I hate to lose it, just because you never know what the market will do and if I will need to fill that. But as of right now, I have six full-time employees, two part-time employees, and then those six seasonal employees that are part of that mapping project that we talked about earlier. And they're currently in my office right now. And any questions with that?
The mapping projects itself, is that all now done in-house?
Yeah, we're doing it all just in our office. So the seasonal workers come in.
One time, they were, it was proposed that some, that they were gonna have.
They talked about contracting it out, and then we found out that that was, they were just going to be hiring interns or other people, just to redraw them the same as we were, for a higher expense. And so that's when they did, it was decided to try to do it in-house.
Well, but that's what also kind of elevated the cost to jump.
Yeah, and as you can see, we haven't spent that amount.
Yeah, I know, but, you know, I just remember.
Yeah, yeah.
Remember all those discussions and.
Yeah, we're only getting, I mean, the seasonal workers right now, most of them are students. They're engineer students up at Utah State. And so we've been getting them from about the end, middle of May, into May, till school starts next week, full-time. And then some of them will continue through the six months, and we don't quite full-time from them, but, and then we start again next May with that. Any other questions? And that's, that's kind of all we have. We, we really don't have a lot, but we're, we do a lot of work, but we don't have a lot of things that are going out budget-wise. We're, I'm expecting that our collected fees for recording this year will probably be similar to last year's. And that's, our numbers are about the same, unless interest rates change in the next couple of months and people start refinancing, that could change that, that collection amount, but.
There has, it seems like the past just couple, few weeks, it's kind of had an uptick in.
Yeah, our numbers in the last few weeks have kicked up a little bit, and, but I don't know if it'll make a huge difference by the time the end of the year comes, but if the interest rates go down, I definitely bet we'll see some of that change.
Some were a little fearful that the interest, right after the election, right after the election, something's gonna happen.
Yeah, I'm sure they're waiting to see what happens in November.
They're pulling the plug right now, saying we do it now, or we're not gonna be able to afford anything, so.
Right.
Well, you're, you're quite an anomaly in the county. Your office is self-funding.
Well, there's.
That doesn't happen.
What is that, fun balance?
Yeah, we got, just shy of half a million out of fun balance.
I don't see.
But I love your miscellaneous account.
Okay. Oh, okay, yeah, I'm sorry. Well, you're pretty close.
Anything else, or?
No.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thanks for your time.
Well, thank you.
Have a good rest of your day.
All right, and, well, I think I've told you this earlier, but I've, in, a lot of the locals in that are actually extremely pleased with the workability of the office, since you've been in there. It is really, really, I mean, it's very positive.
I've had comments.
Very, very positive, so, and they really appreciate it. And you're there, and there's a face to talk to, and there's appointment, I mean, it's just, I've heard comments, it's back like it used to be. So, that's neat, good for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, where are we at? The treasures? Oh, he is.
He said he was coming.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and we'll just change, we'll move on, senior senator? I don't see. Attorney's office, we'll jump all the way down there. Okay, he's done, let's go to vic. Victim services, yeah.
Couple of things to chat about with you. Okay. First. I just wanted to point you to. Thank you, Micah. Okay, so, as you, as you know, the past couple of years in the county attorney's office, there's been a lot of turnover, there's been a lot of change. And so I just thought it was useful to do a couple, just point you to a couple of things as we review going forward, what it's looked like in the past three years. So, in 2021, looking at our special victim statistics, primarily, it's composed primarily of domestic violence and sex offenses and child abuse. And then going to 2022, that percentage changes a little bit. So the trend line that we're seeing is domestic violence is becoming more common and sex offenses are becoming, at least in the last three years, less common from our workload, so. That's what happens when you, that's what happens when you put them in jail. So. So, we're making good progress with our sex offenses, but the number of domestic violence cases that we're seeing are on the rise. And I, our general felony statistics, those stay pretty, pretty similar through the different years. Drugs, alcohol, traffic, DUIs, that's the lion's share of our stuff that we deal with. But yeah, these numbers stay pretty consistent. What's different, though, is the proportion may stay the same for a lot of these. But what I want to point you to is our Class A misdemeanors, that's things like DUI, different kinds of child abuse, assault. Those are on the rise. In 2021, we dealt with 1,000 cases, just over 1,000 cases of Class A misdemeanors in our office. 2022, that was up by 100, 2023, up by 200 since 2021, that's a 20% increase. Second-degree felonies, it plateaued between 21, 2021 and 2022, but we saw a significant increase from 472 in '22 up to 596 in 2023. First-degree felonies, this is what you don't want to see. 179 in 2021, 281 in 2023. Now, I do want to point out.
I just had a thought. Do we have any data as to how this sits in proportion to percentage of populations? As our population has grown, has the percentage stayed?
So that's, that's something that I did want to point out to you. So that, this isn't necessarily a reflection of that people of Logan are somehow becoming worse or just committing more crimes. It's like Councilman Ward said, this is largely a reflection of our increase in population. And also, it's a reflection of the effectiveness of our uniformed police officers. So when we're detecting crimes and we're prosecuting crimes that may have otherwise gone unsolved or not been prosecuted, that's not necessarily something to look down on. This is just looking at how we're using our resources and how we've been using them. Now, jury trial schedule, that's another metric that we track. In 2021, only 64 jury trials were scheduled. And 2022 and 2023, we've been scheduling, going into trial, 164 and 177, 67 times respectively for those years. Now, all of those jury trials that are scheduled don't necessarily go to trial. Most of them are settled before trial, but when you're preparing for it, it's as if you're, you do all the work for it, and then you settle, most, most of the time, you settle it right before trial, even though you've already done the work, so.
Did COVID hit 2021, because we were told there was.
Yes, in 2021, we were still dealing with those effects of those trials that were scheduled for 2020 and 2021 were backlogged. And so we're largely out of that right now, but it does reflect that we just have a larger population. And we have attorneys who are aggressive, trying to be vigorous in their representation and make sure that we can serve the interests of justice the best that we can. So we're not looking to give sweetheart deals and decrease our workload, ala San Francisco or New York. We're just trying to be as aggressive as we can to serve the interests of justice and make sure that those perpetrators are receiving the consequences that are due to their actions. So all this to say is that our office is very busy, and it's looking like it's going to be more busy as time goes on. Another thing that I wanted to point you to is that justice courts in our local jurisdiction of Cache County, many of the local municipalities, that's where you handle your Class C misdemeanors, your Class B misdemeanors, your tickets and infractions. Many municipalities are finding that it's no longer profitable, or it doesn't, it's not self-sustaining anymore. And so they're trying to move away from handling that in their municipality and push it towards the district court. Now, many of these municipalities retain attorneys on contract to prosecute those cases, but there is no indication that I've seen that they are required to do that. And so once those contracts begin to run out, then those fall down to our office, and we're going to have to shoulder the burden of all those different cases. So, as you might know, our, last year, this past year in March, no, this year in March, this year in March, we stopped doing the prosecution contracts for Logan City, because we found that it was a huge cost to the county, and we, the money that we received from Logan City coming into the county wasn't enough to offset those costs. They were asking us to do it for $110,000, and we found that that wasn't even covering an attorney, let alone the legal assistant and software and other fees like that. And so that was a full-time position for somebody, and we were able to shift that person back into our workflow in our office. But given that in the future, in the next year, it's looking likely that many of these municipalities will no longer manage their own prosecution, that they will push that to the district court, it's possible that we will have to have a new judge appointed by the state and have more prosecutors to staff that courtroom next year in the future. So that's something that we will keep you apprised of as we go forward. But, so going into our budget.
Someone's gotta pay for that.
I'm sorry?
Someone's gotta pay for it.
Someone will, it's likely going to be us.
It's gotta trickle down anyway to these cities, or people, you know, all the, you know, the, the patrons, the citizens, it's going, it's gotta be paid for.
Right, it, this, this prosecution, it has to happen. But the city doesn't have to pay for it.
It's just not in their city budget anymore.
Correct.
But they, that's their way of actually just throwing it out and letting somebody else tax it.
Sure, so someone's gonna pay, there is no such thing as a free lunch. Someone's gonna pay for it. And if it's not the municipality, then the person it's going to fall to is on the county level, the county prosecutors. So, I did want to point you to a couple of things in our budget. Some of the things that I wanted to point you to are that for our professional services, our software package, in 2024, we budgeted $435,000 to have a new software deployed this year. That has taken place, we have begun using e-Prosecutor, which is the same software that most other jurisdictions in the state of Utah use. So going forward, our budget request is just the payment for the subscription, no longer that startup cost. So it's significantly cheaper by several, yes, sir?
On the expenditures, you go to 2025 request was $3,070, 2024 budget was $2,500,000 and $500,000. But the number to the side, 131%, I don't follow that.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that Excel.
It should only be like 21 or 22%, shouldn't it?
That might be an error in the Excel sheet. It's adding up all the percentages above it when it should be.
But it didn't do it on the clerks, I mean, on the recorders, so. Yeah, because I went back to the recorder to look at that, and it didn't. So did that follow through on all of these? Because it should only be, that bold and blue should only be the increase of the budget, not the tally of those above.
Attorneys do Microsoft Word, accounts do Microsoft Excel, so I can't tell you why that one's wrong.
Hey, I'm just like flipping out at 131%.
Yes.
That can't be right, so.
Okay. And, let's see.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. I did want to point out to you as well that our professional and technical budget, we've decreased because we're trying to do more of our things in-house. And we found that in the past, we had a lot of money left over every single year for experts that we didn't end up using. So it doesn't make as much sense to have that level of headspace. And if we have a trial that's coming up, we should be able to know that with reasonable specificity. And if we need more for some capital offense trial, or, you know, heaven forbid there's a big murder or something, we should be able to know that with enough advance notice that we can ask for a budget opening to have that coverage. And. So I don't know if I can trust the.
So it's just that one cell?
Okay.
It's pulling the two other columns.
So the second one being down 42% with the.
Right, so the biggest reason, like I mentioned, for that big jump downward in our professional services is because we're no longer paying that startup cost for our software package. And professional services, or sorry, supplies and other services, that's staying essentially the same. 1% difference. And for our minor equipment and maintenance, that's down 24%. We had a new investigator that, Nick Bowman, that we outfitted with the equipment that they need. That has come in very handy, because we did have a previous year, we have had multiple critical incidents this year. So that new investigator and the equipment that we purchased this past year has come in very handy. So that's been very useful. I did, yes, ma'am.
Out to the side there, on the non-capitalized equipment, it says ARPA. What, what was that for, if you'll remind me, please?
Non-capitalized equipment, ARPA. So that was, that 17,000, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Brittany, was for outfitting Nick Bowman for the investigator.
Oh, okay.
His computer. A gun, a drone used to take photos.
Okay, awesome.
From above, some other items that they use.
Thank you.
And, let's see. So I did want to point you to, the biggest change that we see upward is the change in our personnel budget. Part of the reason why the change in our personnel budget from 2022 to 2023, the biggest jump is actually from 2023 to 2024, because we had that market adjustment. And most of 2024, we have had vacancies in our department. And so we anticipate being able to fill those vacancies in the next year. So if you look at our payroll, we have these open positions. One that we've been cultivating, because we have a very promising intern who just took the bar, and he's been a very good law clerk for us. And we've gone to several conferences where, across the country and across the state, it's been an issue for different department, different prosecutor's offices to recruit new attorneys and get attorneys to come and stay and stay with the program. One of the things that was recommended and that we have found to be effective is cultivating interns from the time they're in law school, keeping them as law clerks where you get to know them, you get to know their work ethic, and they get to know the office and how it works, so that when they finally start, they're able to hit the ground, hit the ground running. And it cultivates loyalty, helps them stick with the program for more years. Jairus Kendall was an intern, was a law clerk here, Dane Murray was a law clerk here. That's something that we've felt has been very effective, getting, finding good attorneys and keeping them with us. So we've been holding this attorney position open, anticipating that our law clerk will graduate past the bar, and we will be able to fold him into that position. We've also had this other open position that opened as a result of attrition, that never actually got filled. And so our spending for that, for our personnel has been down, because we haven't been filling our positions. So if we anticipate filling that and being up to full strength, that's the biggest reason for that 2025 personnel change. That's the long and short of it. I don't think we have any miscellaneous accounts. I know that's a, our 2024 budget has $0 for miscellaneous services.
I have a question, Taylor.
Yes.
On the, the personnel section.
Yes, ma'am.
The full-time employees goes up 11% for the year, but the benefits goes up 55%? What, why is that?
I am not sure, I would have to ask Amy why the benefit change is so different.
Is that complete?
We haven't finished that yet.
I didn't think she had.
I'm not certain why that.
I had the same question on the recorders, because I didn't think that we had finished the benefit.
When it comes to personnel, I've been doing the budgeting for personnel. So if there was open position, it might not have been included in my prior year budget. And particularly with open positions, I'm assuming worst-case scenario, when it comes to retirement, you know, I'm assuming they'll have family coverage, whole damn home. So I'm kind of assuming worst-case scenario on the benefits, if there's any answer.
But you haven't got the final numbers, what it is projected to be yet, have you? So your, yours is kind of just a preliminary projection itself right now, so.
Also, the 3% for looking at. It was approved last year for 2024 budget, so we're all carrying that forward in 2025 as well.
Thanks for clearing that.
All right, any other questions that I can dig up for you or point to, or? All right, well.
No, thanks, Taylor.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I am going to pinch it a little bit and jump into the victim services, Victims Advocate Department budget request for 2025. If you take a look, Victim Services is receiving a close to 40% cut. The reason for that is because in 2023 and 2022 and 2024, there are significant amounts of ARPA money designated, pushed into Victim Services, Victim Advocate Department. ARPA, as you know, is going away, and so the 2020, 2025 request reflects that. And so the Supplies and Other Services request is down 93%, because the lion's share of that money was ARPA money. And. Let's see. That's. That's pretty much it. They have relatively low levels of any other expenditures, it's mainly just this personnel.
Are we really not getting any Fed grants from the Ballba Prosecution, anything down there?
I'm going to change. So we moved the Ballba grant, because there's only a prosecution attorney and investigators who are housing in the office. And Andrew is now managing that grant in the attorney's office, so we moved the Ballba grant from the Victims Advocate budget to the attorney's office. So payroll went down here and spent on less more in the attorney's budget, I didn't think about that when you guys asked me about it in the attorney's budget, until I saw it here in the Victims Advocate's budget.
Yeah, we.
But yes, so.
It, it does show up in his.
The rule associated to the Ballba grant was moved from the Victims Advocate budget into the Attorney's budget. budget into the Attorney's budget. And the, and the other related Balla Grant expenses travel and change.
So really, if you take that as the calculation, this budget went down by that, but the other budget went up by that amount, so.
So the county attorney's revenues would look a little bit better.
Um, Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
On the overtime, are you short anybody? And you're not really anticipating any overtime this, in the 2025 budget at all?
They're all salary except for Jennifer.
Yes. In the, in the past, uh, some of the workers were hourly, but now they've all moved to salary.
Okay.
So that saves the county a hassle.
Yeah, thank you. You're right. Okay, thanks.
Hey, pretty simple, pretty easy.
Well, one question I have...
Yes, sir.
With the, with the, uh, disappearance of ARPA funds, that, of course, necessitates a reduction in, in expenditures. What impact is that going to have on level of, levels of service that, uh, the Victims' Advocate...
Sure, I, I think you're absolutely right. And I think that impact will be substantial. Uh, in the past, the Victims Advocates, because of ARPA, some of the eligible expenditures that we've been allowed to help with is, if you're a victim of crime, according to the federal government, there was an increase in crime as a result of the pandemic. And so if you're a victim of crime and you can tie that nexus to the crime, then, there's an impact from that crime. We can help with that ARPA money and alleviate some of those issues such as paying rent, groceries, um, other housing assistance, things like that. And so before ARPA, what we did was we pointed people to their community resources. We pointed them to CAPSA, we pointed them to the family place, uh, their local ecclesiastical leaders. So there will absolutely be an impact and we won't be able to, without ARPA, help to the same degree as we have been the past couple of years.
Okay, thanks. So that's, that's where ARPA funds essentially were employed then?
Correct. That and, uh, the First Responders Mental Health Program.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? If you review them and you come to any other questions or concerns, please let me know and I'm happy to dive into them for you. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Taylor, I just, I wanted to clarify what you just said before, the ARPA funds, giving it back to CAPSA and those different places. So does that increase their budgets? Because now they're going to have to cover up...
By, by directing them to, to CAPSA and these other community enterprises, um, they may have grants or they have other ways of helping besides county money. I'm just saying that the Victims Advocates won't be the ones directly paying, uh, for their rent or groceries or utilities.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Taylor.
So Lorianne, very kindly, there was some question we'd been here today, I apologize. She started with a spreadsheet presentation.
Thank you.
I had some other meetings and you're going to get old school. And old school enough that hopefully we can get you back on, on schedule, because I don't have to be there long. So this first one, do you mind if I stand here?
Oh, you're fine.
Should I open that loud enough? Michael, would you like...
Is it being recorded though, as far as the mic picking it up? Turn the mic.
I can do that, how's that?
Perfect.
So...
Okay, Frank Sinatra, go for it.
Tell you not. So in attempt to get you back on schedule as well, this is my key result area, is the one with the yellow. And the top portion talks about our best year, so here's your homework. And you kind of can see as you report to your constituents where we're at. Let's start at the bottom, second line up. Notice what our online is doing. If you look historically, back in 2018, we had 4 million. Now we're at 22 million. So we're utilizing electronic means to get people to pay, so we're not having to have people and increase our load on... Other, other departments have, have blossomed. We're the same poor people. If you look at the total of online payments, we're at 10,000 as opposed to a couple of years ago when we started at 2,000. So some significant... But you say, well, how many of these people are coming in through their mortgage company? Which everyone thinks that all the payments come in from mortgages. Well, it's only 52%. We're still covering and processing a ton of payments with the three people that we have. But anything that we can do that pushes them out the door means they're not in line. So online means they're not in line. So just some hopes, just to kind of just share with you. Do you see the arrow that's here on the middle section? You can see our total collection has gone from, again, in 2018, 98 million, and last year we were 135 million, so a significant increase. But yet we're not adding salaries and we're not, uh, um, trying to do it with more bodies. We're trying to do it online. Up above than the top percentage, you can see our percentage collection. We are, uh, far better than the rest of the state. So we're at about a 97% right for the last year. This is as of, um, January 31st, when our calendar year ends, whereas the state average is 93.92. So well above the state average in that respect. So some other fun numbers for you to just look at my world. We track everything, and so your next page, if you want to look, this is a snapshot of where we are right now. So again, collection, historically, we were millions of dollars of outstanding debt. We didn't even tell people that they're, they were late on their tax notice when I started. That's no offense to pass, but it's a different concept. If you don't let people know that they're late, then how do you expect them to pay? So we have got our delinquency to a level that I'm comfortable with. It's, again, has a 97% collected. This is where it is right now. So if you look in that top area, 2024, we haven't even sent out the tax notices, but I've got emails that I saw today that we're going to be, start working on that letter, so it's, the fair is over. My year ends. We've got still 117 million that has to come in from 50,000 parcels, but we haven't sent out the tax notice, so we're good. The second section are the people that are actually delinquent, and I do it by year. And you can see the actual number of customers that they are. So for instance, 2023, there are 330 different parcels that are late, but only 203 customers. And then you can see that year by year. At five years, again, we are required to sell those properties. We have one that's there because of bankruptcy. That's going to all change with the deferment bill that was passed, and that's, you know my feeling on that. I don't like that bill. That's going to cause some trouble, um, and anticipating that. So our overall, again, summaries, this is my, my world is numbers. So I track and see trends. And so here's some homework for Nolan, when you need to go to bed, you can just look up and, and see where we're at and ask some questions that way. And so there you be that way. Couple of other things budget-wise, which is what I'm supposed to present. Um, we did take on some additional duties. And so as an example, postage, we had $3,900 that went up in our postage. There's been two increases in postage, one in January, one just barely passed, and so we've had to take care of those. But anticipating, or I guess luckily enough, I went back to the master's touch and said, hey, you've increased our, our, uh, how much you're charging for us to do the tax notice, and they sent us a refund of $3,000 that will bear benefit this year. So I'm a squeaky wheel and we try to keep it as cheap as we can. You'll notice in my actual budget that overtime went up a little bit. I caution Phil when they introduced the, the payroll that mine would go up because my workers don't, historically, they were on paper and they didn't record all their time. Now they're recording all their time and, and rightfully so, they should be being paid for the overtime that they worked. But other than that, um, we do much with little, and we try to use other avenues to reduce the, the impact for our constituents. Historically, we're always turning money back in, but we can't do anything with the postage increase. There's been two of them this year, and that's my biggest expense is postage. So if there's other questions, I've got other details. I think that countywide, we do have a little bit of an issue. Um, I've shared this with Sandy. I hope that you guys are aware with, with salaries and that type of stuff. I think that, um, there's some compression. I can show numbers and other things in other places. I think we've got a little bit of an issue. I hate to be the brunt of that, but I think that's true. But Nolan, you had a question?
Yeah, on your second page, first part down, it talks about overall parcels owing 347. So is that taking the 330 or is that just taking all the past five years?
It's everybody.
That's just, so now we're...
So of, of, of three, of five, of over 50,000 parcels, you got 347 that are past due. But I like to look at it in terms of customers because you've got developers that choose to not sell until they sell their property, and so they float it to the customer. So I like the customer and that's unique, and that's why you'll notice on page one that that wasn't tracked, but it's a lot easier to...
Some of them could have 60 parcels.
Some of them have multiple parcels.
Or more, you know.
Even on, on those, some of our folks from, I don't want to list names, but I'll call them and attempt to get the back taxes paid, or the ones that are the ones that aren't going to be sold. And so our biggest one, if I'm not mistaken, is 50 parcels right now. But yes, there are some that have hundreds of parcels.
Right.
And so I try to encourage those that if they're back taxes, we get those so that they're not carrying those, and we do it a nice way. But we, we, our delinquency is, it's second to none. It's, it, it means our collection rate is better, it means that we have happier customers, it means we're not having tax sales. That's, that's my main role is to make sure that we get those monies in, because ultimately everyone else uses those funds to do what you're doing now. So better I do, the better everyone else does.
I want one question. Obviously, we, we collect property taxes for multiple entities, i.e. school districts and cities.
Yes.
Of ourselves. Do we charge them for the services that we provide?
Nor have we. It's part of their, their, the mill rate. The mill rate that builds up to what the tax rate is, is through the state. So there are some counties that if they were to do a tax increase, would charge them to, to, uh, do their tax increase, but if, if it's included with a tax notice, we just do it as part of ours. And it's, it's, it's on the same piece of paper. So you can't really charge by ink because it's the same price whether you fill it up or, but it's a separate piece of paper. So not necessarily, no.
Well, yeah, there is a charge, but there is an administration kind of fee that does come off of there.
So they have, they have the assessing and collecting?
Yeah.
They get, they get charged and you're kind of taking an estimate of, we think, uh, treasury is 80% their time is related to the assessment.
But, but that's not going to be the entities, though. That's going to be just with the county.
That should be for assessing, collecting, countywide.
So, okay, so countywide, yes, which is also Senate Bill, that, that's where the deferral bill, where they're trying to couch this money into the assessing collecting so they don't have to go through truth and taxation, which takes us from 17 million to 26 million with, no, yes. So that's, that's all in that same bill that they're late Thursday night putting it into another bill to pass without funding, and that's what's going to happen this year, is they're going to come back this year and say, we can't provide these services without funding. So it's going to be an active legislative year again.
Thanks for staying on top of that, Craig.
We try.
Yeah, you do. It's good.
My door is always open. Sandy's been nice to come in. I appreciate that, where we've had some transition. Please, when I send the, the reconciliations, if you, if you have questions, please come. I mean, it's, it's done in a very bank statement, because I have to tie to cash, but as Sandy has seen, there is multiple pages and daily deposits and everything does tie out. But, uh, please, you're always welcome. No more questions from me, even you, Nolan?
I just had a big thank you for you. You do amazing job, so.
Well, I, I appreciate it. I've shown Sandy I've got spreadsheets that I can see where I've been the past year on that day, the trends, where I need to be. Um, I'm comfortable with our delinquency level. There are some treasurers that want delinquency because their mindset is that, okay, then we get penalty where there's more interest. But for the taxpayer and for the rates, I like to try to keep it on the front side rather than pushing them over at the end. So thank you very much, and thank you for all that you guys do, too.
Appreciate you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Senior citizens in there.
All right. Hello, everyone. Um, starting off with our budget, I wanted to go to the last page to our 240, 4970. In our budget for this year in our nutrition department, um, we served 400 unique individuals for Meals on Wheels. That was totaling 36,236 meals in the year. In our supplies for our budget this year, we had, um, we called in already to figure out what 2025 is going to look like, and it will be a 16% increase. In 2024, we spent 15,000 in supplies, and so for 2025, we are, um, estimating that to be at 17,500. In our food packaging, we called all of our packaging, that is who we have our contract for all of our Meals on Wheels packaging, and they are telling us that we will have an 8% increase in food packaging supplies for this year. As far as everything else, we've pretty much remained the same, nothing, nothing really changing from last year. Moving on to the next one into 4971, our activities expense increased by 4%. One thing we did different, um, in 2024, we asked for $2,500 in our activities, and these are things for all of the parties that we do for the, for the clients. In 2025, we are asking for 3,500, so a thousand-dollar difference. And the reason we're doing that is we want to provide socialization opportunities to 469 unique individuals for Meals on Wheels. We are going into the home for their activities, and we're putting packages together, activity packages, and we're dropping them off. And so that's where our activity budget is increasing there. And also in 2023, I'm sorry, 2020, yeah, 2023, we provided non-evidence-based activities for individuals, um, that is for health promotion for 454 unique individuals. And so what does that mean? That means for classes like yoga or dancing or, um, art classes that are not evidence-based, we provided, um, 454 people came to the center for those type of activities. A ceramic, that's a non-evidence-based health promote, health promotion class. Um, in our health promotion, though, these are things that have, um, the science behind it. So these will be our fall prevention classes like our Tai Chi, living well classes that we've had volunteers do for us, even our, um, arthritis, living with arthritis classes. Um, over the course of 2023, we had 205 unique clients that came to the, to these classes. And over the year, that totaled out to 3,309 duplicated. In our transportation, you'll see that we had a 25% increase just because of the fuel and maintenance of the vehicle. Um, we've got, uh, an older Jeep that we've had to, um, repair. It's a 2013 blue Jeep. We just put on new tires for it recently. Um, but we're looking into next year, probably leasing out, um, a vehicle and probably surplusing so we're not having to, um, continue up with that maintenance. And then really into my 4971, I didn't have any changes. I mean, I think my most drastic one was, I went from 500 to, to, uh, 4974, I went from, uh, 1,600. And last year, we were in the negative by 537, so we've just kind of made sure we're right up where we need to be with that one. Thinking of our future goals for 2025, um, in just everything that we've done in the center, we've used our volunteers quite a bit. We have volunteers for all of the Tai Chi classes. We have volunteers for the art classes, line dance classes. And, um, in our evidence-based programming is where these are, these are classes that individuals need to be trained in to be able to teach the programs. And we've tried working with volunteers, and it's, it is a little bit more difficult. It's more time-consuming because they are having to learn a curriculum and teach that curriculum. Um, but for our 2025 goal, we're hoping to be able to add some additional health promotion programming, um, for our patrons. And some of those programs look like Aging Mastery Program, Stepping Up Your Nutrition. We do the Tai Chi. Luckily, we have that all right now through volunteers. We have three volunteers teaching that three days a week. Um, we have Living Well with Chronic Conditions. Um, we used to do that with IHC. Um, they are no longer doing that, so we need to find a volunteer or as the goal that I had... Or as the goal that I have is maybe trying to find if there's any room in our budget to be able to have a position for that kind of like a health educator. Arthritis Foundation, Mind Over Body, Healthy Bowels, Healthy Bladder, Walk With Ease, Living Well With Chronic Pain. So these courses are courses that are taught at the state and they are taught by a curriculum. And so they are evidence based program and we do receive federal funding for teaching these type of courses, are evidence based. And so this year for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, for our grant, we're going to receive close to four hundred, it's three hundred and eighty seven thousand back in revenue from our area agency on aging and federal grants.
Giselle, I have a couple of questions. When we talked yesterday, they, I know that Amy hasn't come back with any salary recommendations. But I'm here, some of the salary accounts are, are increased by quite a bit from last year. Have you already put, is that pre-reclamation from Amy or did you?
That is pre from Amy. I have not met with Amy yet about any of that.
So did you just put in an increase that you assumed?
I did not put any increases in the salary.
If you look like on the forty nine seventy one, it says the full time employees went up two hundred and twenty two percent. Overtime went up fourteen hundred percent. Can you see that? Like-
The percents are incorrect.
The percents are incorrect.
Yeah, I just noticed that the percentages are way down.
But, but still to go from one forty six to two thirteen, that's, that is like, can you see the numbers I'm looking at?
I can. I know that last year we did have that huge wage increase that came through. Now I'm not seeing why it's, I'm not understanding why and I haven't seen that. So I would probably need to meet with, with Jill or-
Okay, that, that might be something that wasn't done correctly.
I have ten different employees listed in, in the department. So some of those could have been that we had open positions. I've noticed in a number of departments, we didn't budget for open positions last year. I'm including those in this year. So some of these salaries you're going to see increase where I'm budgeting for, you know, if they're approved to pay for ten employees, you're going to have all ten salaries in there. Whereas last year, we did have some departments, when we budgeted, there were open positions and no salary was included for those open positions at that time.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I had, I wasn't expecting to see higher percentages because I thought we were going to wait until we got stuff from Amy to increase those. But that obviously is, we'll get to the bottom of that.
And she will be updating the council at the next meeting. I have included market and merit in here. I've included, you know, additional 401K, long-term disability, all those different things. But where you will notice, some of the jumps in the different departments, probably ninety percent of the time, it's linked back to open positions that weren't budgeted for in last year's budget. And so I've got about, you know, probably fifteen positions across the county that have been approved positions that I can go through with the council, you know, in future time.
Yeah, everything else looked like what we talked about. I just, I didn't understand those.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Giselle. You do a great job over there.
C J C.
I'm still standing up in here in about four, but he told me five guys shows up.
Did you want to talk, talk to us until or?
No, I don't. I don't know how you can say.
We're ahead of schedule. You guys are doing great.
Thanks for the info. Giselle, could you entertain one more question?
I would love to. Do I need my budget spreadsheet?
No, no, this is just a theory, that thing. Oh, perfect timing. But just first of all, you know who you're serving?
Yes.
Okay, the Meals on Wheels is pretty well countywide. It goes everywhere. Do you know that?
Yes.
How about the, the in-house programs and everything? The people that come there, where are they coming from?
All over.
Do we track what?
We do track. We can give you the, the stats. If I can get online here, I can even see-
That's one of the biggest questions I get.
Yeah.
As to why so much money is coming to the senior center in Logan when a biggest, they feel like the biggest chunk of the people that is serving, except for Meals on Wheels, is, are from Logan City.
It is actually split. So when I get back to the office today, I'll email all of you and send you guys a copy of the statistics page that you breaks down. We even have it broken down to who's coming for activities. We have it broken down by towns as well, where they're coming from that are visiting the center for, whether they're coming for Medicare or whether they're coming to have lunch or they're coming for an activity. All of those are broken up that we can see who is actually coming and where they're coming from.
Okay, that's, that's a big question I get, especially from towns that are, are basically, they're running kind of a senior center themselves.
Right, right. And unfortunately for those small towns, they don't have those federal dollars to do the big programs. And so it's almost like they keep trying to reinvent that wheel. But, you know, something I always tell them is the county is doing that. We're providing all of those activities for them and they can come for lunch at a suggested donation. And that suggested donation is for, is four dollars right now. So anyone in the county can come because we are receiving federal dollars. The county senior center is for every individual. And so yes, we do have an array of individuals from Mendon to Avon. All right?
Children's Justice Center. Said you weren't going to be here till four. That's pretty good.
My calendar says four fifteen, so.
Probably, you're probably on time to church too then.
Oh, let's not go getting carried away.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. It's been, it's good to see everybody. My attendance at county council meeting in the last little bit has been kind of spotty. I've had a number of conflicts that just keep coming on Tuesday night, so.
We're glad you're here now.
Thank you. I'm assuming that everybody, or I am to understand that everybody has a copy of-
Yes.
Okay. Just to go through a, a couple of points on the budget that we have discussed, Lorianna and Brittany and I have been working on. I really don't anticipate much in the way of changes or new monies. There are a few places where that's the case. Obviously, the personnel monies, which I, I mean, that's, those decisions are made pretty much above my head. You'll see in professional services, there was a change for three thousand dollars or an increase of three thousand dollars. That was intended to be spent towards well checks and the peer services or peer support activities for the mental health legislation that we had last year. I, I know that that is still in conversation as to, and there's even recent conversations that may make that a little bit out of date, or at least that amount a little bit out of date. And then the other change is supplies and services, other services, there was an amount for four thousand dollars. Last year, the council may recall, we talked about a number of pretty big ticket projects that needed to be done at the C J C. And the council provided a hundred thousand dollars for me to work with to do that. That has been going well. In fact, we are in the process right now of getting a new C J, or ADA ramp. So, so we're on track to be able to take care of those projects. I don't see asking for additional monies for that. Construction projects at the Children's Justice Center are very disruptive to what we do on a day-to-day function, terribly so. So I don't anticipate doing that into the coming budget year. So I'm not asking for that capital improvement money again. But I do want to, and this is where the four thousand dollars comes in. I do feel like I need to get the center on a rotation for maintenance. Carpet cleaning, to my knowledge, it hasn't been cleaned since we moved in, updating paint and things of that nature. Four thousand, maybe more than is needed, but that was the number that we discussed and thought would be a good place to start.
Any other questions?
Do you have questions?
No.
As far as the state monies, that seemed to be pretty flat from last year to this year. They gave us the, the contract is still for the two hundred and thirty seven, eight hundred. And we're getting another fifty thousand dollars one time, which I intend to use towards salaries or employee compensation. But that was pretty flat as well. There may be more one-time money, but until the, the state knows exactly where that needs to be distributed throughout the state. I tried to get more, but they told me fifty thousand was it, at least for now.
If you use that one-time money for salaries though, won't that be a problem the next cycle, the next budget cycle?
I, I don't think it is. It hasn't been for this year. The interesting thing for the C J C is that we've got, the state is on a fiscal calendar and, and the county is on a annual calendar. And so it, about every six months, we've got new monies that are being allocated to us. So it seems to have worked okay. The mandate that we have for that one-time money is that it must be spent. And my opinion is the most reliable place to do that is to apply it to salaries and benefits. So Brittany and Lorianna have been instrumental in doing the voodoo that is required for financial stuff. The math feels like-
That's how the percentage just got up to thirty three thousand.
And so- The, the state budget analyst was very, very complimentary towards Brittany and Lorianna this year as far as state monies being spent out properly and appropriately on a timely schedule. And so that's all been very positive, which to my understanding, hasn't always been the case in the past. But that's where we are now. And, and that says a lot for the work that they do. Any questions to that or concerns?
I just have one question. I'm looking at the budget numbers you passed out to us here at the beginning of your, of your presentation. And then looking at the budget numbers that were part of our packet here, and there's a slight difference, you know?
I wouldn't, yeah, I don't know. The sheet that Lorianna and I have been working on is the statement of revenue. It doesn't have line items on it or it doesn't have budget lines on the sheet that I've been working with. So if you're seeing one that has budget lines, that's different than what I have.
Not a large amount, maybe fifty five hundred dollars or something like that, but I just wondered what.
What, what specifically were they at? Because I would like to know too.
Yeah, the non-capitalized equipment is different.
Yeah.
By seven thousand dollars.
Personnel is different. Two ninety four, three versus two ninety seven, nine.
It's the twenty twenty four budget numbers that are different from one sheet to the other.
Yeah.
I-
Yeah, it's not big, not a big amount.
Not, not, not big amounts.
The approved budget. Okay. I'm certainly, I, I mean, if there is a discrepancy, I would like to be able to, be able to sort that out, but I-
Well, I like your numbers better. They're lower.
Yeah. I was, I tried to stay pretty conservative about how I spent my budget this year just because I want to know how it spends. I mean, it seems to me that every year, you know, just between utilities and trainings and things like that, there's a little bit of a flow as to how things are going to be spent. I certainly don't have any problem philosophically from spending it down to the penny. But I don't want to do that without knowing how it's going to work from one year to the next, to the next, to the next. And so I would, I tried to operate pretty carefully this year to make sure that I didn't overspend and that I don't overspend on any budget lines.
I noticed that I see a insurance premium for the, what, you tell League of Towns?
Yes.
Explain that one.
We pay, we pay an insurance premium.
Isn't that covered countywide? Don't, aren't they under our total umbrella? Or do you take that and then disseminate that to every department, the costs?
Take it and allocate it amongst all the departments.
Okay.
We used to pay it under a, you know, the senior department account, I think is where all the insurance used to go. But in the efforts of, I think, I can't remember which year we did it. It was either last year or the year before. I think it was the twenty three budget where we started allocating them amongst departments.
Okay. Yeah, I guess that's one I hadn't picked up on, having it being disseminated to all of the-
I think it's also because the C J C now has a building that's on the insurance. Whereas before, before this building, the Friends-
Friends Committee actually owned the facility.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Understood now. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns?
Any others? Thank you. Appreciate you rushing here and being here and be as efficient as you are. Okay, I guess that's, if there's no other questions, we've got a few minutes. I think there's a, a little food item that's in the other room, so.